All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the meeting to order for August 26th. Clerk Bullock, would you please take the role?
Uh, Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Pelle Van Ooglu.
Present.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Garza. Councilmembers Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson. You have six members present, you have a quorum of the committee.
That takes us to the meeting minutes of August 12th. Councilman Spatafor.
Mr. President, I move the meeting minutes of August 12th, 2024.
There's a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, it takes us to agenda item number four, public comment. I don't believe I see anybody from the general public, but if there is somebody that I'm just not seeing under these bright lights, if you are interested in speaking to any of the agenda items, we do take folks on a first come, first served basis, and we will give you up to three minutes. Going once, going twice. All right, that takes us to discussion action item number five. Uh, our first item is a, uh, just very, very brief discussion, uh, on Human Services General Fund allocations, third quarter report. You do in your packet, you have a couple of things, you actually have a cover memo from, um, our own office manager, and then you also have the General Fund Human Services Quarterly Report for the third quarter. Uh, if you guys recall, um, in, in terms of our policies fiscal year, uh, 2024 policies, we did request, uh, these quarterly reports. Um, second quarter report, we did actually have Kim Coleman in here, but that was because we were actually going through the, uh, the budget process. We don't typically have anybody in, um, unless after we, uh, publish this, we get, uh, questions of that nature from, uh, committee members, and since we didn't get anything, we didn't request, uh, for attendance, so I'm assuming, uh, we don't have, uh, questions or concerns. If questions and concerns, after you review this, um, should arise, uh, feel free to direct those to leadership. Uh, certainly, uh, you can direct those to the administration, um, but again, that is in your packet. Uh, we will, um, need a motion unless there's, is there, there's conversation, there's questions, comments. Seeing none, um, Councilman Spatafor, we simply need a motion to place on file.
Mr. Chair, I move the item be placed on file.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, that takes us to item C. Um, we do have, I believe, our chief strategy officer, uh, in the gallery, uh, so if we could have Jake Brower down to, uh, the well, we'd appreciate it. Uh, this is a discussion on changes to Michigan minimum wage and sick leave laws. Um, you may have, uh, read, uh, there was a recent Michigan Supreme Court, uh, decision, uh, that will impact us moving forward in terms of minimum wage, in terms of sick leave. And so what we did was we asked, uh, and obviously it's going to have a, an impact both, uh, in the public and private sector, so we asked, uh, if our chief strategy officer could be here tonight, uh, to discuss, uh, what that Supreme Court decision was, uh, and what, you know, uh, we anticipate that, or how we anticipate that impacting us moving forward. Uh, Mr. Brower, we're going to turn the floor over to you.
No, uh, through the chair, it's a pleasure to speak before everyone. My name is Jake Brower, I'm the chief strategy officer for the city. Um, overall, you might recall, a number of years ago, there was a, uh, proposed citizen initiative. Uh, the legislature decided to do an approach of adopt and amend to, uh, substantially change the impact of that. Um, that was recently in July, uh, 31st of 2024, um, um, changed by the Supreme Court, and so there, that has implications towards the two laws that were adopted, one being for minimum wage, the other for earned sick leave. Uh, for the minimum wage portion, there's a scale of, uh, several years, so originally it was proposed that in 2019, the wage would go to $10 an hour, uh, 1065 in 2020, uh, 2021 up to 1135, and 2022 up to 12. Um, there is a inflation adjusted, uh, component of this, and so I believe when I was looking, uh, for preliminary estimates from the state, uh, they're currently estimating in 2025, that amount would be 1248. Um, overall, this would impact, um, not too many employees at the city, uh, it would be, you'd see it possibly in some of our interns, uh, at the lower, uh, end of the scale, and our, uh, temporary, uh, employees as it relates to the park system would, uh, probably see the most impact. Um, overall, uh, between these two laws, uh, the city of Lansing will be in compliance, but this is not just something that impacts us, but impacts, uh, everyone throughout the state, and so we'd encourage, uh, all businesses to take a look at these two laws and how this would, uh, impact their operations. Uh, the law, um, as it has been, um, enforced by the Supreme Court will be effective in February of 2025. Um, thereafter, the increases, um, I'm not sure if it's entirely been determined yet whether those will take place, uh, on the calendar date or as of January of each year, and so we're, um, paying attention to guidance as it comes out and becomes available. Uh, again, this is, uh, fairly fresh. Um, moving on to the sick leave portion of that, that's being expanded to all employees. Uh, it goes from one hour for every, uh, 30 hours worked up to 72 per year, uh, and this leave can be carried forward. Uh, we have HR, uh, here available to talk about any of the components of that, but we'll be going through, um, all of our union agreements and making sure that, uh, we take care of any components that apply outside of the unions as well. Uh, and then the last component of the, uh, notice that you received from our auditor, Manu Costa Risson, uh, relates to GASB 101, and so there's this, uh, grand accounting organization that exists, and they, uh, take a look at the, uh, way that we, uh, and other, uh, communities report in their financial statements, uh, various factors, and this instance, they took a look at, uh, compensated absences. So how do we record the liability for, um, this unpaid leave that, uh, exists, but isn't necessarily something that, um, is a hard expense at this moment? And so it's a liability that exists on our books, a long-term liability, uh, so it doesn't necessarily impact our general fund balance, uh, but is represented in the overall net position of the city. Um, overall, the rule clarifies, uh, the exact way that this is calculated, and so our auditors will be, uh, working with us, and we'll be, uh, talking with our finance department to make that exact calculation, but it should be fairly straightforward, being largely a function of, um, plugging in the numbers to the HR data and, uh, coming up with a estimate. And so overall, for Lansing, this will be effective with our, uh, fiscal year 2025 audit, so it'll be a bit of time before you see that, um, although we could potentially implement it earlier. And so, um, now, uh, if you have any particular questions as to any of these components, uh, we'd be, uh, glad to potentially answer some of those, uh, for you today.
Sure, and before we open it up to questions and comments, I didn't know you two were going to be down here, so I appreciate you being down here. Uh, we do have Director, um, Elizabeth O'Leary, uh, from Human Resources, and also our chief labor negotiator, Dennis Parker. Do you have anything to add before we open it up for, uh, questions?
Um, I would just say that Jake gave a great overview, and we're happy to answer. I would say that, um, Jake gave a great overview, um, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that, um, this body has.
All right, we appreciate that. Do we have any questions from the body? Uh, Mr. Jackson?
Just quickly, you mentioned for the minimum wage, one, that interns would be affected, but also some of our temporary employees, did you say from O and M, or something else?
Uh, pretty, predominantly from parks, and so, uh, the folks who would be helping out with, um, our athletic programs in particular, uh, they might be paid at a rate of, say, $12, uh, an hour for, um, by a per daily rate, and so we would be, uh, taking a look at those on a individual basis and making sure that, um, their contract agreements, uh, are aligned with, uh, state law.
Thanks, I guess, I was really trying to figure out what jobs that our city are lower than 12-something.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's only the parks, is this referees or something else?
Yeah, precisely, like referees, uh, um...
Activity camp leaders, um, the temporary employees that come in, um, towards the summer months to help staff some of our camps.
Okay, well, that, that sounds a little low, so I guess for the record, that it sounds low, and I was just curious on who would be affected, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other questions? Seeing none, we certainly appreciate it, all right. Uh, we are going to move on to discussion action item, uh, D, uh, really for D, E, and F. Um, we're going to, you know, there's some, some overlap or some, um, some connection, and so we, uh, are going to ask Jake Brower to stay with us. Uh, we'll ask Raleigh Van Fossen, Director of Economic Development and Planning, to, uh, to, uh, visit us in the well. Uh, and then also, I was going to, okay, shit, I thought I saw Amber Paxton, but I don't, okay, fantastic. Uh, so the first piece, again, this is an executive order, uh, moving Office of, Office of Financial Empowerment to the Economic Development and Planning Direct, uh, Department. So right now, uh, that office sits within, uh, the Department of Arts, Neighborhoods, and Citizen Engagement. Uh, and so there is, uh, a effort to move that office, uh, which will require, obviously, a budget amendment, uh, particularly with the, uh, Personnel Line Item. Uh, so we are going to turn the floor over, uh, in terms of the executive order, uh, to Mr., why don't we start with, let me start with, um, Mr. Mumbi. Mr. Mumbi, do you want to speak to this?
If I can get the mic on, uh, sure, um, Ja- and Jake and Raleigh will do a better job, but, uh, um, the general thinking is that, um, this, uh, this division, uh, has worked well within the Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement, however, a lot of their activities align very well with, uh, Economic Development and Planning, it seems like a natural home for them, and, uh, Raleigh and team have been, um, open to the, the concept and, and willing to, uh, to move them in, and Jake and Raleigh can say more about that, but, um, there, a lot of their activities align with, with work that Raleigh's team has already done.
So when I, I'm going to turn the floor over, but in your presentation, please, please include, is, does this include as an example, um, physical relocation, uh, does it, uh, adjust the operations in any kind of way? Uh, and so if we want to turn the floor over to Mr. Van Fossen, you have the floor.
Sure, um, good evening, good to see everybody. Um, the, to start, to, to hit the two questions you just asked, um, right now, no. Um, you know, Amber and team, um, are, are fairly self-sufficient, even in their, their, their being formally housed in the Departments of Arts and Neighborhood and Citizens Engagement, um, as in they, they didn't work out of lets, they've got office space over in the old Rio School where Clerk is at, Lansing Promise is there, um, and there's some coordination in doing it and, and having them housed there, largely part with the Lansing Promise, and knowing that one of the pillar programs of the Office of Financial Empowerment, um, is, is, is our Lansing Save Program, that is a direct partnership with the Lansing School District and Lansing Promise Program. Um, so with this change, um, Amber and team would not be coming, um, to 316 North Cap, where majority of EDP currently is housed. I'd make a special note to our Parking Services team, who are down at the North Grand Ramp, um, and so, um, they would remain there. Um, I think, you know, Christopher mentioned quite well why this came about. Um, there's actually past history with OFE and the Department of Economic Development and Planning, formerly, when it was Department of Planning and Neighborhood Development. Much of what we see OFE today was born out of the Planning and Neighborhood Department, um, with former employee Andy Crawford, um, and team, you know, Delisa Fontaine started under Andy, Aaron Butendorf, who's also a city, um, staff member, was in AmeriCorps Vista, who helped serve in that program, in that department. Um, and in the past, even when it moved out into the Neighborhoods team, um, the Department of Economic Development and Planning, as the recipient of the city's community development and block grant funding, funded portions of what OFE delivers to the community, specifically the Financial Empowerment Center Program. And so after discussion, you know, internally on, on the city's end, um, it made sense. Um, we've got the capacity and the EDP leadership and EDP mainstay to add this as a, uh, sixth division within the work we do, largely because it, um, in my opinion, fits quite nicely with our Community Development Division, specifically some of the funding that we ultimately can partner in the delivery of programming.
And I appreciate that, and obviously the question stems from the fact that you all, I mean, so much is already housed in your department. We have the planning and the zoning and the parking and the code and the building safety. Um, so I was a little confused at first when we, uh, were talking about the shift, that makes a little bit of sense. Uh, certainly appreciate that. In terms of the executive order, uh, which is, you know, reorganizing some of these departments, or I should say offices within the departments, do we have any questions? Any comments? Uh, Mr. Cost, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Um, this is dated August 22nd, '24. Was this move done earlier than that date?
Uh, who is that question for, if I may ask?
Anyone that knows.
Yep, um, this would be effective upon, uh...
I guess I, we're all looking, uh, at each other, trying to figure out, um, who's going to answer. I'm not sure I understand the question, what do you mean moved upon?
It was my understanding that, that this move already took place with Amber before this executive order date.
I, I think, uh... I think, uh, Raleigh has taken on some additional, uh, assistance with them. Uh, we can't move the finances without, uh, assistance from City Council and approval, um, but I think the executive order is something that Mayor Shore, um, can put in place, uh, without, uh, the council approval, so this is, um, memorializing the move and asking for council to move, move the funds. But Raleigh, I, I believe, um, Amber and team are already working with, with your department, and maybe more closely, uh, since this has been discussed, but official or not, I don't know that it's official until the budget moves to, but, um...
Yep, I, I would concur, certainly the, the budget move would make things permanent, it would make things a bit more streamlined in terms of the accounting for finances and delivery of programs and services. Only within the last 30 to 45 days have, you know, some of the day-to-day conversations and transfer of, you know, and Amber's sake, who does she reach out to when needed help? Has that been, you know, has that changed, instead of calling, you know, former Director Fontaine, you know, now calling me, much knowing that we've got to bring some of this up for consideration tonight? But it should be well-known that the OFE, even in the last three to four years, is fairly self-sufficient. You know, Amber's a longtime employee of the city of Lansing, well over a decade, so I have no doubt, um, even in, in, in my absence of a day to be able to answer a phone call, that Amber's got the skill set to deliver the day-to-day of the programs.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to get at, if, if she moved, um, or the, the department moved back in July, how were they being funded and, and who was managing her? And it sounds like both, um, Delisa and yourself were still managing her?
No, I, I would say, I, certainly I'm her direct rapport, um, and, and so that's been final, that decision's clear. It's more so of the accounting side, and that's, uh, where, where those dollars get ultimately submitted to, and so as the budget still stands in the Department of Neighborhoods, you know, there's still some coordination on ensuring invoices and appropriate accounting and so forth, as obviously that, that was an office previously within.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Brown?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Hussein, thank you all for being here. Um, I have worked with the Office of Financial Empowerment for probably almost 15, 10, 15 years when it, you know, from the very beginning that it was birthed, and have seen it do great work and help a lot of people, um, over the history of the HRCS department, um, the individuals receiving services, uh, from Financial Empowerment usually were kind of co-collaborated, as well as, um, you know, in the birth of the Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement Arts Department, um, really, um, being connected to the community, uh, over the last year or so, it's been, uh, communicated to us that the volume of, uh, direct services to residents for financial planning and empowerment, um, have, have decreased. And so my question would be, uh, why not the Department of Human Relations and Community Services? Uh, because that's been the history where, where serving people who, who may need some assistance, uh, in financial empowerment, and so that, that's where in the economic, you know, as, uh, Councilman Hussein indicated, does have a lot of different services and has, you know, quite, um, large department, I know we're going through the restructure as well, um, you communicated that, um, when you first came on board, that you're continuing to move that along. So that would be my question, um, h- how is this helping people in Lansing become financially empowered by making this move?
Sure.
Um, at, at first, I'd like to say, just as of a, a couple of months ago, can't, can't, can't pinpoint the exact date, the Financial Empowerment Center, which is one of the activities funded through the OFE, is now fully staffed. So I think in, in the last year or so, as services have been maybe in a downturn, we haven't been serving as many folks in the community as, as previous, I can fully report that Amber's now got a fully-staffed Financial Empowerment Center team, um, and so they're able to now, you know, pick back up, maybe pre-COVID where they had been serving. In terms of where and a difference between EDP and HRCS, I think we could spend all night, there's quite a bit of similarities between the work that the two departments do in terms of community service, and for me with an EDP, that's largely our Community Development Division. You know, that's been a division of the department for years, and it's the, uh, the task with funding and deploying City of Lansing's, um, Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, as well as our home allocation every year. Certainly you've heard me this past year come up for that presentation, and then past folks prior to me, and, and those dollars are funding a lot of those frontline community service programs. In fact, EDP partners our Community Development Division with HRCS in the delivery of our Emergency Solution Grants specifically, as it works to combat homelessness here in our community. And so I, I, I would argue a little bit back that, that our community development is definitely boots on the ground, serving the community and the programs they do. In fact, as I mentioned, they used to fund the Financial Empowerment Center, so I lead to, see a lot of strong partnerships, almost kind of bringing this back to where it was first started.
Thank you, so with you answering the question, uh, what would be the strategy that you, um, are, I guess, determined to employ or, um, to ensure that, um, individuals are having access to, um, the financial counseling that the Empowerment Center provides?
Sure, the Financial Empowerment Center specifically, you know, obviously outreach is first and foremost to what they do, and so that's a, uh, you know, the easy answer, continuation of, of what's been working in the past. So that's continual partnerships with the variety of nonprofits, um, housing providers, other employers, to ensure that folks know that this is available, you know, first and foremost to them as residents of this city. Um, it's continuing direct mailers as an example, attending neighborhood events. You know, we'll have a wide array of outreach models that we'll use to reach the doorsteps of Lansing residents so that they know that this isn't only a service that's offered, but a free service. You know, to come in and meet with somebody who's qualified to offer this free financial planning that can then either, you know, result in a one-on-one session right then and there with a counselor, if not a direct referral to, you know, dozens or so resources that those counselors have access to. Um, we'll, we'll continue that outreach, and that, and certainly ensures collaboration with this body, um, you know, folks within your ward, or for those of you that serve the entire community, you know, ensuring that FEC is first and foremost, as a city service, that folks know is available.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Councilman Jackson? Pass? Okay, do we have, uh, any other questions, comments? All right, so you do have the executive order in your packet, folks. Uh, I'm going to turn the floor over to, uh, Councilman Spatafor for a motion to place on file.
Mr. Chair, I move to place the executive order, moving the Office of Financial Empowerment to the Economic and Development Planning Department on file.
All right, motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, and then that takes us to item E, um, and you can stay with us. Uh, this is a, uh, resolution, uh, of, sorry, of a budget amendment fiscal year 2024, 2025, so essentially what this does, uh, it helps effectuate the finance, the financial side of this thing. Uh, so, uh, we have some changes to personnel and operating line items. Uh, Mr. Brower, do you want to just walk us through it real quick?
Yes, uh, overall, this, um, this is fairly straightforward, so we take the amount of the Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement budget that is, uh, attributed to the Office of Financial Empowerment, and we move those dollar amounts, uh, to Economic Development and Planning. And so, uh, overall, uh, that would clean up the appropriation so that, uh, by year end, we're making all of the financial, um, uh, transactions out of the appropriate department, and so...
So specifically, we're looking at 507, 2,997 in personnel, 195,735 in operating. All right, do we have any questions? Mr. Cost?
Just a quick point of clarification for the city attorney. Um, I, and I'm, you know, I understand all this, and I'm, I have no problem with it, but typically, wouldn't we do the money first before the person or the department shifted from one department to the other?
Um, there's no legal requirement to do that, I, I understand the question. Um, I think it makes sense for them to be done essentially simultaneously, and just from listening to the discussion provided, and I can't speak specifically for the mayor on this, but, uh, listening to the discussion, it sounds like operationally very little is actually changing, um, and that the money is really the formal piece that has to be done. Um, so, I guess, I don't know, maybe, but there would be no hard requirement, because even if somebody were to start reporting to somebody else, um, from a financial standpoint, if their budget is still within a different department director, that would be the person that signs off on monthly purchases and things like that, if that makes sense, until the budget moves formally.
No, it, it does, but it sounds like they were already following orders from a different director, which makes it confusing, right?
I, I really can't speak to the operational change and exactly to what extent. I, I mean, I, from what I heard, I think that from a budget standpoint, um, things are still flowing through the department, that it is housed, or it was housed within.
I guess my ask would be to the administration, just to make this cleaner, is perhaps that, you know, when department shifts like this happen, that we get the resolution for the money as well, um, rather than have all of this very confusing information. Um, I mean, I, I totally understand the, the move, but it would, just seems cleaner if we did this together at the same time.
No, thank you for your comment, and to some degree, we, uh, do appropriate our budget, um, at the lump sum, and so, um, whether or not a department or a particular section of an office is using, uh, part of one appropriation or the other, so long as there's available balance within, uh, their budget to cover the temporary cost, uh, there's some flexibility there, but, um, overall, um, ideally, we'd, uh, have built this into the budget process, but having been, uh, implemented later than that, uh, we're glad to bring it to you here today.
I'm more confused after you answered that, but I agree, it would make sense to try to do it, uh, together in the future.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, Councilman Brown?
Not to belabor the point, but I do understand what, uh, Councilman Cost is saying, so I would, uh, concur with him, thank you.
Yeah, and, and frankly, I think that would mimic past practice, right? So you look at, um, as an example, back in 2019, uh, when we actually moved parking into Economic Development and Planning, I believe that's how we did it, uh, how it was actually conveyed to us, how we vetted it, how we approved it. Um, so, yeah, I think that's been the way it's done in the past. Uh, with that, Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, thank you, um, and, uh, Jake, just sort of, I understood what you were saying, but I just want to put that there. But I do want to make a motion to approve the FY 2425 Budget Amendment, moving Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement to Economic Development Planning.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and then lastly, uh, Mr. Van Fossen, we have a resolution, no, I'm sorry, this is just a discussion, overview of the Economic Development and Planning Department. Um, I think we've had some conversation already. Uh, we've talked a lot about everything that is under that umbrella of Economic Development and Planning, and it is a lot. So I know that when, uh, you kind of, you know, were on board into the city, uh, and learning more about that department, um, I think there was some, some, some thought, uh, about, um, some maybe efficiencies, maybe some, um, some kind of reorg, maybe, so I, I think we want to hear where you're at with some of those things. Um, and then the idea was to also hear kind of how then this office kind of fits, uh, within that, but I think you kind of already answered that. Uh, so if you wanted to speak, uh, too, and this is also an opportunity to boast a little bit, uh, about the good work you guys are doing within your department, so, uh, you have the floor.
Sure, very kind. Um, you, you know, I'll start with, with what you shared in, in terms of it being a lot. Certainly, the city is, is, is a big operation in and of itself. You know, EDP is not your largest department, I think by my account, we're either fourth or fifth, so there's certainly a handful of departments ahead of me if, if we're going off of the principle of how many staff or how many divisions. I certainly know we're probably also not top of the list in terms of divisions either. You know, OFE is going to now be the sixth division, um, of the department, and for those who need the reminder, you know, EDP includes our Planning and Zoning Office, Code Enforcement, uh, Building Safety, Community Development, Parking Services, and now, um, you know, with your support, tonight, OFE. And so I don't, I don't come to the job every day thinking this is a lot, um, and, and much of my ability to say that is the folks who are already on the team, you know, when I came here in December. We've got a strong department with strong management leadership, um, not just in their professional expertise that they bring to table, whether that's from what they've learned on the job here at the city or in former roles, but we've got folks who are, who have been with the city for some time and have been able to build up that rapport, and so they make my job easy, the folks on their team make my job even easier. Um, certainly like most, any department probably here, or some of my colleagues, uh, you know, there are challenges every day, um, but I see a lot of what's in the department as, as things that make sense together. You know, code enforcement is hand-in-hand every day with our Building Safety Office and our Planning and Zoning Office. The three of those talk intermittently throughout, depending on an individual enforcement of a house, all the way to something bigger or something larger, like a, um, a planned new police and fire station, you know, off of South Washington. All three of those departments are talking to each other on those types of matters. Further gets interconnected when we're funding projects that our Community Development Division supports. You know, you, you, in my past life, you know, that's Walter French, you know, that's supported by the Community Development Office with federal funding, but then has to work hand-in-hand with our Building Safety Office to get permits done, has to work hand-in-hand with our Code Enforcement Office when it comes to rental registration, and already at the beginning of any project, has to talk with, you know, if you're a developer in town, you're going to knew, you're going to know Sue Statuak by name, you know, our zoning administrator, because all of those projects start with a site plan. So right then and there, I've covered four of the existing... So right then and there, I've covered four of the existing five divisions I've came into inherit here in this last December. Parking Services might be a little bit of an odd one out sometimes to be able to directly relate some connections to the day-to-day of all of those divisions, but makes sense in terms of economic development. You know, these are strong assets that parking is responsible for the day-to-day of our downtown, and a part of the mayor's vision for economic development is determined on revamping and revitalizing our downtown. That's just one strategy of a citywide effort, but Parking Services specifically is tied to that because much of the assets that they control are right here in our downtown, whether that's any of the three ramps, a variety of the surface slots, and certainly around street parking. You mentioned, I've already talked about OFE and maybe interconnectedness, so I'll take you up on the offer not to have to belabor that anymore. But what else have we accomplished since I've come, and I'll end it there? You know, when I came in and in consultation with the mayor, one of the biggest items and still top of the list is filling the vacancies that are throughout the department. You know, you were joined earlier tonight by our esteemed HR Director Elizabeth, as well as Dennis, maybe they're still sitting behind me, so I'll boast a little bit more too in their presence. But we've been working hand-in-hand. We meet weekly to talk about those vacancies. They've been instrumental to help revitalize how and where do the department post those jobs and recruits, and we've been fortunate, you know, since I've come here to fill some critical positions. You know, these aren't just any job. These are job, and I'll give some examples in our Building Safety Office, that are jobs that require licensure through the state. You know, to be an inspector, you have to be licensed through the state, and you can't just be an anybody who wants to desire to go into that. You also have to meet the state's extensive requirements to even apply for the exam. So when I came in, and since then, we've been successful in onboarding a chief building inspector. We brought on two additional building inspectors. We're still searching for two final more. We've hired and replaced the gentleman who retired. We've since replaced his position and filled our chief electrical inspector, hired another electrical inspector. We've filled our chief mechanical inspector, as well as hired another mechanical inspector. And so that office alone, when I came in, had the highest rate of vacancies, and since then, we've been successful in bringing that down. And every day, you know, I'm sitting down at my desk, talking with folks on the leadership team, both in-house but also external like HR and the mayor's office, to continue filling those vacancies. I can tell you today, if the candidate says yes, we will have a full Code Enforcement Officer Team. All 11 positions will have been filled. At that point, it'll leave us with two vacancies in our premise team. That's it, so knock on wood that the candidate accepts our offer. So to me, that's progress that's been made here in the first eight months. Thank you, Councilman, and we'll continue working at. You know, I'll stop pontificating up here on the dais, but I'll defer to any additional questions you might have.
We appreciate that. Do we have questions or comments? Can I, let's start with that last point, actually. So we actually approved in fiscal year 2025 budget, an additional code, right? What have you all decided to do with that position?
Sure. So I'd be happy to talk some of that a little bit offline because some of it's not formally determined yet in terms of me having vetted it through all internal aspects of the job, certainly folks who, some of the folks on the team too. So I certainly don't want to necessarily say something in a setting that might cause some headache for me tomorrow morning, but I can tell you, we have a plan, and we're working through that. And my hope is within the next month or two, you know, once I've made my way through the internal side of things and vetting of what a position will be, you'll see something posted, and it's going to be along the enforcement arm. But right now, we're looking at a little bit more of defining a leadership position than maybe straight going for a code officer position, but they'll still have an enforcement ability. And again, I'd be happy to talk a little bit more in a private setting, if not come back in a month when that job description has been formally approved.
Sure. And that's fair. But I would, you know, task you to go back. And, you know, during the discussion, obviously, you know, it started with a conversation between Mayor Shore and myself. And one of the things that I asked, you know, the reality is we have added quite a few rentals, right? The past few budget cycles, but we have not added code districts. And so the idea was to lighten the loads of the respective code officers by creating additional districts. So I would, I just, you know, and at the end of the day, right, we funded it in a way where you can make some of those decisions, but I don't think that gets after what we were trying to get after. So it's a little concerning.
I'll tell you this, because I think you're going to get exactly what you're asking for, but I'm looking to add leadership components to it as well. So that would add some additional responsibilities than simply being assigned to district and reporting directly to the code manager. I'm looking to absolutely have somebody who will be out in the field, doing rental inspections, taking some of the load from the 11 officers we currently have, but creating a different leadership position. Right now, we have one lead housing inspector role that provides leadership to the 11. You could start to infer and connect some of the dots of where I'm getting to that the second leadership position might be similarly aligned to, but I've got to wait for that final job description to be approved.
Okay. The other pieces, a couple weeks ago, I had asked the administration to look into, and not look into, but at some point, report back in terms of the BSNA conversion and its compatibility with Pay-It, because we were hearing out in the field, some folks were frustrated with site plan reviews and permits and things. Where are we at with that?
Sure. We are certainly still going through the implementation phase, so for those either watching or up on the dais to expand a little bit more. And I believe May and June, the city began conversion of BSNA.net to BSNA Cloud. Certainly, there's a whole plethora of benefits to the city in doing so. I'd employ to, you know, invite, you know, my counterpart, Desiree Kirkland, and folks from IT maybe, not to put them on the spot, to speak citywide of that, because I can only speak to how the conversion is helpful to EDP. But the cloud, for example, what it's going to allow our team to do is access property records in the field much easier and with swiftness versus using the .net capability. We'll have some capability to utilize tablets in the field a lot differently in the cloud version than we have been able to do so in the .net. But with any major system implementation, there's going to be hiccups. What I can commend both on the city side and BSNA side is their forth willingness to continue offering even more training than EDP was initially offered. And so what that means is, you know, Desiree and team have gone above and beyond to ensure that BSNA has come back out again. We're actually going to have them here again onsite in our office the first week of September. So we're working through that. Every day, we get better at it, and a part of that includes messaging that to the community because, as you've noted, you know, any change on our end that potentially delays, especially during a busy construction season, it's ultimately going to impact the customer trying to access that or trying to utilize that for our service, whether that be a permit, rental registration, and so forth. The other side of the implementation is taking the payment side of how we accept those dollars here at the city, and that's moving to the system called Pay-It. And so currently, they're still separate, and you know, so if you apply for a building permit today, you've got to access Pay-It's website to pay, but go back to BSNA to actually formally submit that information. It's our belief and my understanding that the city is fully intending to see those two be merged, and so it's a matter of continuing and working with the software developers to get through that. And again, every day, every week, I see progress made, and so I'm hopeful for when that's all done, because as you've noted, we're in the heart of construction season, so I'd be lying to you if I didn't tell you this brought delays. It did bring delays. You know, for folks on the city side who have to be trained, you know, that takes time out of their day to stop what their normal day-to-day is, to learn the new system, and then to be able to follow up with folks accordingly, and that's been offered. But now, we're kind of in that home stretch. You know, over these next couple of weeks, I'm optimistic that Pay-It will be formally merged with BSNA, and you know, the team will be fully confident in their day-to-day abilities.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Van Fossen. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Brower. We certainly appreciate it. That takes us down to item G. This is discussion budget priorities for budget fiscal year 2025, 2026. You all know that, per the charter, our budget priorities are due to the administration on October 1st, right? And so for new folks, this is kind of our wishlist of sorts, right, to the administration. And then they begin their process, and obviously, they kick over, recommend a budget to us next year, March, actually, the last week in March. When they kick that over, and it hasn't always happened, but we certainly appreciate this administration because they have, the last few budgets, I believe, have included a document of some sort that speaks to it, but they are required, per the charter, to actually address our priorities. Were they able to actually implement them? If they were not, why? And so this is a really important part of our process. You will see, because our last city council meeting where we could actually vet these and approve these would be September 30th, so in committee, you will start to see these on those agendas. And so those conversations will happen in respective committees. And then again, on September 30th, what we'll do is we will have a document of sorts that is ready for vetting and approval. Okay? All right. With that, Councilmember Spatafor, item H.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that pursuant to MCL 15.268 Sub C of the Open Meetings Act, that we recess into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lansing and Capital City Labor Program, Inc., non-supervisory unit as requested by the city.
All right. Here is a motion on the floor, and before I turn the floor over to Ms. Boak, we did receive an email from Mr. Parker. We're going to take a hard line on this because we have talked to law and determined that it may not be appropriate to have folks in that room if there was not an official request. We have, from, again, Dennis Parker, request for Ms. Elizabeth O'Leary to be in the room, Chief Robert Backus to be in the room, our city attorney Greg Venker specifically to be in the room, as well as Mr. Dennis Parker. So those are the folks from the administration that we'll be inviting into our closed session. Further discussion? Seeing none. Not clear.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pali Vanoglu?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Six aces.
Fantastic. All right.